Thank you and welcome to the first council meeting in November. At this time, I would ask that Councilman Glavine say the prayer and following that, Chief Geiser will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Glavine.
With our heads, Almighty God, there are moments when we find ourselves on the edge, exhausted and overwhelmed. The burden seems heavier than we can bear, the task more significant than our strength, and the journey longer than our endurance. We come before you, Lord, knowing that you are our refuge and our fortress. Tonight, please look over our nation as we make decisions that will shape our future, but please bring us together, Lord, and let us know that we are Americans and that we love this country. God bless. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second. Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of suspending the rules? It's approved on a six oh vote. Let the record reflect that Ms. Newman is not present. If the clerk would read the changes, please.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5 oh, resolution to purchase network switches from Howard Technology Solutions, and substituting 5 EE Exhibit Only Resolution, amending Resolution 56124 for the city of Biloxi program for public information.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor? It's approved on a six oh vote for the clerk. Thank you. At this point, on the presentation agenda, I have the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everyone, to this meeting. Everybody has smiling faces. We hope at the end of the meeting, we have everybody still smiling. And if you haven't voted, you've still got time to go vote, right? Okay. But we have, at the last ten or so days, we've had a lot of activity and I want to take a few minutes to kind of recap some of the significant things. And we'll have some updates on a lot of issues at the end of this report. But one significant thing that started a few days ago was the successful opening of Rousas. And that was a big thing, coupled with the extension of Pops Ferry, the groundbreaking extension of Pops Ferry. I think we're off to a very good start on that activity. And I think from a projection standpoint, they're about eighteen percent over what they projected. So that's a good thing. Another couple of things that we want to talk about, LSU played Sanford this weekend, at Sanford this weekend, and I think that was a couple of thousand people, but it was very well attended. And as well as, I think Trick or Treat on Howard Avenue, that was a tremendous event. And as well as the haunted house at the Biloxi Farm Museum. Of course, the cemetery tour, had a couple of thousand folks, and that was done over the last few days, or over two days. And there was a number of events, skate park events, and First Friday was off and running last Friday. And we have, of course, coming up this Saturday is the Veterans Day Parade, coming down Howard Avenue, and we're going to have an exciting number of floats and items in the parade. Couple of other things, on Friday, the eighth Leaders Against Letter will be moving and trying to do some of the things that keeps Biloxi safe, friendly and beautiful, as well as the Thanksgiving Day Breakfast at the Civic Center. But we did have a Senior Citizens Halloween event, coupled with the Harrison County operation at the Civic Center, and it was well attended. Then, as I said, the couple of activities as far as the youth football that's coming up, I think it pages nine, ten and eleven, as well as we had a couple of flag football championships at the Biloxi Stadium. Soccer league is getting ready to start, but we're trying to accommodate about six hundred children that have been signed up for it. But they are to utilize the resided, and there's a little bit more work to do as far as seeding and fertilization at the soccer field at A.J. Hallway Complex. Again, I mentioned the Senior Citizens Breakfast, as well as the up and coming Veterans Day Parade, and I think that starts at eleven. Is that right? Okay. On the last ten or so days, we've had an increase in activities regarding the homeless. And I want to kind of, I've talked to many of you here today, and also over the last ten days, but I want to report on some pretty good news, and maybe we can couple, I'm going to ask Chief Miller to come up and give us a report in just a moment, but one thing I think I want to mention is what the success that the diocese has had. The bishop indicated that they have actually placed seventy-seven people in a more permanent situation, so I think that's a success story. But we have had a number of activities, increasing number of activities, as well, as I said, Chief will give us a report. But, you know, a number of things, I think Newton said, whatever action is equal opposite reaction. Well, you know, they had a Taylor Swift concert in New Orleans, okay? And a lot, a number of those folks found their way over this way, as well as some of the activity that they did in regard to the Super Bowl coming up. So we know that there's been a tremendous increase in people on the street, and that we've had a number of meetings on, you know, keeping all these activities in control and not making anyone uncomfortable. And with, from a legal situation, we started talking about the lardering and some of the laws that's on the books, and we have actually executed some of those positions. And Chief, would you kind of share what the results of those activities or our policies have been?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start first by just going over some statistics that we pulled earlier today. We've been very busy dealing with the homeless activity, and this will show that. Since the October the twenty-eighth till the third, we had three hundred and fifty-one calls for service that just related to unsheltered or homeless people, and out of that, there was forty-nine reports that were taken. That same time period, we've made around thirty arrests, and those arrests, and all these arrests just fall into, again, what we would say is the homeless category. Everything from warrants, trespassing, we arrested, in the Greater Avenue area, we arrested a guy with a handgun, he was discharging that weapon, he was a convicted felon, and he was arrested, charged with a felony. We arrested one for assault on a police officer. Many warrants, public intoxications, and I think that's about it for the arrest type. But again, it was about thirty arrests in that short period of time. That's officers getting out there and doing their job and trying to locate some of the troublemakers. We recently started a contact list, and when someone is new comes to Biloxi, you know, we have officers that do nothing, that's their job all day, is to deal with homeless problems, homeless complaints from businesses and residences. And so we decided, we've seen such an increase in new faces that we have not seen lately, and it's a pretty significant increase coming into our area, and some probably coming from the New Orleans area, but we decided we would start a contact list and just ask these folks if they could tell us where they came from, and some of them cooperate with us and do tell us. And so we had, the first top of the list here is a guy from Athens, Georgia, and he was not told to come here, but the judge said, you've got to be gone out of this town by the end of the day. So he got a bus ticket, probably had heard about Biloxi before, he got his bus ticket and came to Biloxi, and he bought his own bus ticket. Then we've had several, and this is a problem that we have called MDOC on before, but we've had several that showed up here that were released from the Mississippi Department of Corrections after doing some time for a criminal act. And somehow or another, this is where they got their bus ticket to, from MDOC, sent them either to Biloxi or Gulfport. There's been a few others, there's some that have some mental problems, and the families, when they came here to stay with the families, the families just couldn't deal with them and ended up putting them out. So that's what we're doing now, is trying to track and find out where they're coming from. If there's a city somewhere that's purposely sending them here, we'll find that out and we'll deal with that city. But I can answer any questions that you have.
Yeah. Well, again, I think from our standpoint, our policies are turned up to tune in to what we need to do. I might ask you, just minutes ago, you and our attorney went to a situation, I think it may have not been reported, but there was a policeman following me on the way to buy martinis and liquor store, and they had, I would say, a homeless person with debris all over that sidewalk. And I suspect, we need to confirm that, but I think the policeman followed me and might explain what they're told to do and what the chance they're given, because literally, I saw it, and I can't even got, you and Peter, we went to see this, but I suspect our policy, clean that little problem up.
By the time we got down, then the mayor came, saw it, picked us up, went right back down there, it was all cleaned up, and the person was gone. And what I suspect happened there is exactly what we've been preaching, is the officer rode by, saw it, got out, cleaned it up, they were either arrested, or he moved them on, one or the other. But that's what we're seeing a lot of, and we're dealing with it the best way that we can. And I think we're doing a good job. Thirty arrests in a few days for those types of violations, I think, is doing a good job. But you have to keep in mind that the police department is not immune from this either. I can come to work in the mornings, and there may be someone right there in the front with all their stuff scattered out, right in front of the police department. And if you ask them why they're at the police department, they'll tell you that they feel safe there. And just things like that. And it was a constant struggle to try to find them a place to sleep at night, and they'll come to the police department thinking that they can sleep there. So it's something that we're working on.
Right.
From both ends, constantly. This is a twenty-four hour day issue, and I know that people are getting upset about it, but no one has dealt with it any more than the city has. And I think we're doing the very best that we can do right now. We have some other arrows in our quill that we'll be pulling out, and if this increase continues. Now, we always get an increase a little bit this time of the year, but this, right now it seems to be a little more than what we usually have this time of the year.
I would think, I think one of the policies is our grocery cart policy, too. You know, I don't think any one of them have actually purchased one of those carts.
That's right.
So that, you know, gives us a position to say, what are you doing? What do you have? Those kinds of things, and ask for identification. I think the key thing that will put us in a good situation without, you know, stepping on anyone's civil rights is if we ask for identification, given reason, we may discourage some of those folks, you know, being asked over and over and over again. I think that's a part of our game plan in order to, you know, make our visitors and our citizens feel at least safe and not uncomfortable in any situations. And we're compassionate in every sense of the word, and we want to help where we can, but we, you know, it's up to us to do the right thing, to say this is abuse of our hospitality.
It absolutely is, and it's, you know, we need help from the citizens, and they've been great to call us. Some of them occasionally, let me throw this in there, get a little upset if an officer goes out and it's on private property, and they want them hauled off, but they don't want them arrested. They just want the officer to arrest them and take them away, and we explain to them that the law doesn't allow that, that we're going to need them to, if there's no trespass letter on that property, we're going to need them to come down and sign the charges. And sometimes folks get a little upset about that, but that's, there's no mechanism in the law that allows an officer to arrest someone for trespassing on private property unless the, unless this person is going to, the property owner's going to sign charges. So I just, I'd like people to understand that. We need your assistance. Take a few minutes, come down, sign the charges, and we can do what we need to do. And I can answer any questions that you have.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Who you sent a Sunday PM bus?
Mississippi Department of Corrections. We have no idea. We've called them the first time, and it was kind of a fluke that time, but now we've got several on this list just recently that were released for whatever charges they had. They were released from prison, and they get a bus ticket when they're released, and some of them are showing up here without being from here.
That's man, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah. Well, I assure you, we're right. I assure you, we're looking into that with MDOC, and as to why you would release them here, especially if they don't have an address to go to.
I know you're the man, said you don't want to be anybody uncomfortable, or definitely on what the citizens get lucky about.
Right.
Because of the hundreds, people run around the street.
Right.
They live here, pay their taxes here, those are the people we've got to take care of. And we've got to move on, and you've got to move on. You only help somebody that wants to be helped. If you don't want to be helped, you can't do anything.
Can't agree with you more. Absolutely. One hundred percent.
I think I offer, too, is to do some signage, like at Lighthouse Park and something, hey, this place is closed at ten o'clock to everyone. And people sleeping along the sidewalks and a number of times, so we're going to make it apparent, and, you know, if you're there after ten and, you know, don't want to do the right thing, you're going to have a place to sleep.
Absolutely.
But it won't be in Biloxi.
Absolutely.
Another problem we had, that's coming from the tents, two or three people that actually live in DeArville, so they was over in DeArville in a parking lot hustling people for money, and they said, where are you from? He said, I live in the tents, you know, in Biloxi. And he said, the guy told me, he said, he said, this guy must have been seventy years old, he said, he's raving his family, this guy was old as I was. Well, maybe not that old, but.
(laughing). Well, I mean, like you said, you.
He didn't say that, but they would said, I'm living in them tents.
Yeah.
And I said, so we've got to pay attention to how many tents we have, are we still allowing to add tents to it?
Flipping back to Mercy Cross and some of those things, they got sixty days. And again, I kind of trust Catholic Social Services and what they, and they identified and they have IDs, and I think we've got a handle on who they are, and I think we're in sync with the other social organizations to make sure that we're not, you know, being tool around. Chief, thank you so much, Chris. I know we've been working pretty close on what we can do legally, but what we can do for the citizens of Biloxi and not be abused by a few folks that make it bad for everyone else. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And that, well, that concludes my report. I want you, I'd like to ask to spread the expenses of the Biloxi Tribal Credit Card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We do not have any more departmental reports that I'm aware of. That being the case, we'll move to council reports. Mr. Lawrence in Ward one.
Glad to be back. Been on vacation, actually, working on the leg, trying to get the dancing moves back, but I'm getting there. We're doing well. But I thank all the well wishes from everybody, so I appreciate that. And thinking the homeless, had three or four calls a day about that. So I know, like you said, we just got to stay on top of it. You've got to clean them out of the city, got to clean them out of parks, had them called about the Miramar Park on occasion, they're hanging around there again. It's kind of tough when you have your kids playing, and you have the homeless there. You know, it's a scary situation for parents, just like they had right on Benaki, you know, on the class secret, you know, same thing there, they sleep on the table. Whereas at Senate, we're losing the rights for our citizens to go to our parks that we built for them. And, you know, and that's the sad thing that happens in the city. And it's tough, because you said, they don't care. They're twenty-four hours, they're on the streets. They don't care, they have nothing else to do. But our citizens, we need to just make sure you step up and make sure we take care of and protect our citizens, just like the Greater Southern, you know, they've been fighting that thing there for a couple of years, and I don't know, we need to write a resolution to say the city's going there, clear cut the property and trim the trees and just charge them. Because you can't wait another year or two to have that done in Greater Southern, because that's not right to the people that live there.
Well, there is progress, I kept Mike from giving us our update, but there are progresses being made with that whole stretch of, along railroad tracks around Iris that way, but I don't, you know, that's not a total solution, but we're actually working the details out. But shortly, we'll be reporting, you know, some of the issues or resolution of some of the issues with regard to clear cuts and stuff like that, but a little bit, you know, again, it seems to me, it's almost like the tide, it comes in and comes out, tide rising right now, so we need to address that situation. That's the whole point.
You clear the land, they're going. And they're going to hide under the trees and.
They're going somewhere. They're going somewhere.
To a hell. So I mean, just, I mean, you take care of one problem for them, because they've become pretty regular, speaking about it constantly, you know, so we need to make sure we step up and get that done, whatever it takes. On a good note, the Halloween parade they had turned out great, and that was one of the first things they actually made after the leg surgery, so, but a lot of people, the kids love it, they had a lot of fun, you know, city did a good job giving the cane out, traffic went well, I think they had a large turnout. So I think it turned out really great. So that was a happy Halloween back then. So the next thing we got for the senior citizens is the Thanksgiving dinner.
Thanksgiving breakfast, yeah.
Yeah, and then you have the special need dinner for Thanksgiving at Snyder Center. So those are the big things, and people enjoy coming to those, and it was a good event. So we just be ready for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Councilman Guines in Ward two.
Yes, just want to footstone what you and the mayor said, great Halloween parade, had an awesome time there. Welcome back, George.
Thank you.
Glad to see you here. Welcome back, Chief. I just have one thing, Keller Street and Austin Street, and I'm talking north of the railroad tracks, south of Division. We put some signs there to slow them down from going up. We have a bus that stops on Keller Street and Austin Street, and we thought the signs would slow them down a little bit. So would you consider doing a study to see if a stop sign can be put there? One of the residents is really worried about the kids in that area when that bus stopped, and then I went by there and took a look at it myself, and, you know, they, I get scared when they hitting those brakes, and you've got those kids out there. So if you please do a little study on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Council McGilvery in Ward four.
No report, just one question. Mayor, are there any plans, long term, short term, regarding the lights in the fields across from Margaret Sherry?
Yes, there's some plans. We're kind of studying what we need to do as far as the placement and numbers of lights, and I think Sherry and Jamie are kind of pulling that together on what we can light, you know, in that whole area, from the international field as well as on the, across from Margaret Sherry, too.
So that's in the works. Secondly, on the Mercy Cross operation down there with the Catholic Diocese, it's my understanding that they're not taking any more overnight folks. Do you know anything about that, Mayor?
I'm not sure of the status as far as getting new tents in there. I think they're working, you know, those folks down, but they're still feeding every day, but not, you know, I don't know the status of, you know, new folks on site, but I know they've helped seventy-seven people so far in the last six months? How long have they been in operation, Peter? Six?
Six months.
Six months. So it's, you know, as I said, the new influx seems to have kind of thrown the whole caboodle for a loop, and, but, you know, I think people being aware of where they can go, where, as far as sleeping overnight, we need to understand what can be done at Mercy Cross and some other places, too.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine in Ward six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got quite a bit I need to go over. First of all, I'd like to welcome Councilman Lawrence back to the table here. I was going to tell you to break a leg, but I'm just going to tell you to shake a leg.
I already did that.
You know, so I'm glad you recovered, looks like you're moving around really good. So welcome back, Councilman. Want to announce that I have a town hall meeting scheduled at Biloxi High School Internet Cafe on November twenty-first. I realize one of our directors, Christie, you got a meeting in Wool Market that same day at four PM in Wool Market. If you can make it, fine. If you can't make it, I understand, but I'd love to have you join us along with the other directors and anyone from the mayor's office.
What time is that, Ken?
The time would be from six PM to seven thirty PM. Pretty cool venue. I went and looked at it with the school administration, and I think it's going to work well, so I'm excited about that. And my wife even may make some pusheradas, that seems to be a little draw, so she may have some of those for some snacks. Also, just like to announce that we have narrowed down about six candidates for the tree committee appointee for Ward six. The mayor's reviewing those, and I think we'll have an announcement soon. I'd like to thank Bernie Marinovich, who was the first appointee, and he was followed by Christine Davis. They both did a great job, and I'm sure one of these candidates will do a wonderful job as well. On the agenda tonight, we have a first reading for a rezoning request, or recommendation by the planning commission for Brody Road and Cedar Lake, the corner. I think we need to be careful as we assess this. This is a first reading tonight, so we'll pick it up in a couple of weeks. This is mainly a residential corridor with some recreational activity, so I'm sure we'll have a spirited debate. I represent those who I knocked on the doors and they asked me to be their voice, so I'm going to have to gauge that pulse to make sure we're moving in the right direction. Phase two, I noticed it's on the phase two paving for Shawnewitz and Stacy Lane, I noticed it on the recent engineering report. Christie, all I'm asking, do you have a potential timeline? Are we talking six months to a year? Are we talking more or less than that?
It really depends on funding, there is a timeline coming up next week.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. That's all I needed to know on that. And then I've had this in the hopper for some time, and I haven't asked for an update, streetlight on Savannah Circle West, if we can take a look at that, maybe get the power company to look at, or if there's anything else we need to do, or if for some reason we can't do it, I need to give an update to the residents in Savannah Estates. All right. I left this topic for last, and I'm going to get one of the representatives to come up here. I noticed there's at least two of them here in the audience, Daniel D'Amico and Larry Richardson, but it's regarding a trip that we took this weekend to Burnsville, North Carolina. I had every reason not to go. I had a doctor's appointment, I had to cancel Friday, I had my grandson that I haven't, I've missed one tournament since he's been five years old, and, but something compelled me to go, and I'm so glad I went. It was emotional, it was heartwarming and heart wrenching at the same time. So, Daniel, if you don't mind, kind of share your experience with the group. And by the way, before he starts, Crew of Neptune, which by the way, our councilman over here for Ward seven is a very proud and active member, and the Trident Foundation, which I see Larry Richardson in the back, he represents that organization, were the driving force behind that, and I'm just so glad they allowed me to tag along. Daniel?
He's hard to miss, and I missed him, you know, he's back there. He's right there by Yule.
Councilman Glavine, have him to hit his microphone so everyone can hear you. Thank you.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, so again, my name is Daniel D'Amico, I'm a board member for the Crew of Neptune, and like Kenny was saying, a member of the Trident Foundation is Larry Richardson, which is the president of Trident Foundation, the 501(c)(1) portion of the Crew of Neptune. Right after the storm in North Carolina, myself, Billy Moore and Larry got together and said, hey, let's do something for these people. After being, growing up around here and going through Hurricane Katrina, we kind of had that feeling of, we need to do something. These people helped us approximately twenty years ago, not quite there yet, but close to it. So we came up with a committee, and we started raising funds, and we started collecting materials, supplies, got in contact with the city up there, and started asking them exactly what they wanted. We didn't want to be just same old, same old, sending water and food, things of that nature, that you know they have an abundance of. So we reached out to their city council, their city members up there, and we came to a conclusion of saying, hey, we need heaters, we need blankets, we need things of that nature, because it's starting to get cold. For those who don't know, it snowed there last week. While we were there, it was in the low forties at night, so these people are freezing. So with the help of the local community, we were able to get eighteen pallets of supplies to bring up there to deliver, anything from heaters, sleeping bags, tents, buddy heaters, propane, things of that nature. We also, while being up there with the help of people like Yule and his restaurant and different pieces around here, like Butcher and Tucker. We also, while being up there with the help of people like Yule and his restaurant and different pieces around here like Butcher and Tucker, was able to serve 2,200 or so, give or take 100 here or there, hot meals within a six hour period. So you can imagine the line that we had constant. Even Kenny, like he said, didn't think, you know, he stood in that line and served food for six straight hours. So they were really appreciative, so thankful. They even, there was quite a few of them even had tears in their eyes. We've met a few mothers up there that were actually from this area. One, one mom of six actually lost her home in Hancock. She graduated from Pearl River. She's now lost her home there, and she's trying to figure out what to go through next.
She left Hancock County to get away from hurricanes.
Exactly. That is exactly. She, she spoke to quite a few of us, including Kenny, and that was her story. And she was overwhelmed to realize the Gulf Coast represented and went up there knowing that she came from this area. So it was a big deal to her. But, you know, we left Friday morning. A crew of about 15 to 20 of us went up there. We got there late Friday night, woke up 5:30 AM, started cooking, got done about 7:00 PM, turned around and came back Sunday morning. We got back about 4:30 in the afternoon on Sunday. But that's what the city of Biloxi sent up there, a great representation of what it's all about to be down here. Thank you.
And I just, I just want to have some closing remarks as well. The, the mayor of Burnsville, we got to meet him. We delivered our mayor's proclamation. It was a very emotional time for him. But Russell Fox, Mayor Russell Fox is his name. We also gave him a Biloxi flag, which he said he's going to display in a prominent area. He was blown away by what we did. We, we did that presentation shortly after we were kind of wrapping up. Daniel mentioned that we wrapped things up, and we actually, he didn't say this, but we had guys sleeping in the back of their trucks. There's hardly any lodging. They were sleeping in back, our guys were sleeping in back of the trucks. They were, some of them were smart enough to bring little tents, so they were in luxury. They were sleeping on the town square, but it was still cold as hell.
Yes, it was.
And the mayor came out again around 11:30, 11:00, 11:30 at night, sat around the campfire and told some additional stories. One other thing Daniel didn't mention, Kenny Foreman and I think it may have been Larry, they took a, a kind of side trip in some of the hard hit, hard to get areas where bridges are washed out. The locals are rebuilding those back to try to get access. Houses are washed 100 yards from where they were. People are in those houses that are washed 100 yards away, trying to stay in them and protect them. But the other compelling thing is there's these red tags along the river. The river, I think, crests around 30 feet. The water is estimated to be 30 feet above that when it came down and was wiping out everything. Those red tags are dead bodies that were marked by cadaver dogs. And they can't get to them yet to dig them out or to retrieve them yet, but they, they've marked them so they can go back and eventually retrieve them when they have access to them. So if, go ahead.
Sorry, Kenny.
Yeah.
That estimated number, just for, that's not being reported yet because the bodies have not been recovered. That estimated number from the mayor is approximately 800 people.
In a little bitty, not very much a big town either.
Correct.
So, but God is good. I just want to say that. I'm glad I went. I feel stronger. Bomb with my brothers from Neptune, Trident Foundation, the people of the coast. Yule, again, my hats off. He's got a business to run. He took off, and man, he was a workhorse. He kept that food, food flowing. We also had another guy, Cornbread. I just got to mention Cornbread. He was fried over 400 pork chops, or nearly 400 pork chops, and he kept that going. And it was just, it was, it was a well-oiled machine. We, we didn't know how it was going to work together, but we got there and it just clicked, and we did our thing. Anyway, thank you all for giving me an extended time to report that.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Councilman in Ward Seven, David Shoemaker.
Hey, just a few things. Grass cutting last, end of last week. And Saturday, Public Works was cutting grass on some of the main streets in Ward Seven and some of the side streets. So I appreciate them getting that done finally. Roundabout, the roundabout on Shriners has been a, a lot of issues lately. Very narrow driving lanes, no barricades, potholes, rebarbed. But hopefully, I spoke to someone from, a supervisor from M.D.O. last week, and they ordered some concrete barricades. And apparently work had stopped there, I guess about the last month because they were waiting on the barricades. I did notice today, I know they were delivered, I guess the end of the week, last week. They were out today in certain areas. I don't know if they're going to have more or not. There's still a lot of areas with no barricades, but hopefully what's there is, is better than what we had before. They, he did tell me as well that the construction won't be finished probably until spring, which I know is a long time from now, but hopefully weather will remain well, and they can get that done sooner, hopefully. Christmas parade, Wool Market, we'll have a Wool Market Christmas parade, 14th of December at 2:00 PM. You can register through Parks and Rec, and they have a little, little generic form to fill out. It's free to register. Trailers, cars, floats, Jeeps, anything, pretty much. It's a good time at the end of the parade. It starts at Shorecrest, at Short Cut Road on Wool Market and goes west to, if you know where Toronto's is, and turns north right there at Toronto's and ends at the school. Santa Claus will be there. A real good time. It's, I think the last few years, it's actually gotten a good bit bigger. So it's a good time. If y'all can come out, if you're not going to be in the parade, at least come out and enjoy it. There's, it's a good time. And lastly, I'll have a Ward Seven meeting, next Thursday, actually. Thursday, the 14th at 5:30 at the Wool Market City Center, which is right there next to the library on Kaylee Cove. The directors will be there. I think most of the directors, hopefully the mayor's going to make it. And I'm sure there's going to be plenty of questions and some discussions. So next week, Thursday, the 14th at 5:30. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Just a reminder, at our next council meeting, looking for a monthly personnel report. We've been doing that recently, okay?
It was delivered, right?
The monthly update. I think it was done.
Okay, I hadn't received it, but. Okay, it'd be great if I got it in an email, but that's okay. I'll, I'll get it. I'll enter the data. It's not a problem. Next observation I'd like to make, I, I asked Chief Miller to have an officer take me through the Broadwater property. And probably spent an hour, I think it was Officers Ladner and Turner, terrific guys. They knew the area. Ran into a couple of individuals there. They were reminded that this was a no trespassing area and that the next time they'd be arrested. Saw a lot of old camps. There were a couple of folks still in a couple of camps. But if you've not been out there to tour it, you should make that appointment and go take a look because something needs to be done. It's a, it's a serious issue. I, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if it meets the legal definition of a public nuisance, but I can't help but think that it probably does. And I, I would think, as Mr. Lawrence mentioned earlier, if folks, homeless folks, the most poor, want to be in wooded areas, out of sight, if we could trim those trees, bush hog that property, I don't know what it would cost. I don't have to worry about what it would cost. I'm not the property owner. But it is a mess out there. And I, I don't know about the sanitation issues. I didn't notice any odors, anything like that. But there, put it this way, I stopped counting grocery carts at 60 in the first 30 minutes. The yellow ones are from somewhere. There's one from Target, closest Targets at DeIbraville. So I'm just saying, if you've not been to physically take a look and take the tour, go see. I, I have pictures if you don't want to take the tour, but it is something else. I, I knew what to expect because we've had homeless spots, camps in West Biloxi, but not on this scale. I would say that. Status of the veterans, Pierre? I read something in the paper, and is it, where are we on that? Is that proceeding or what has to happen next?
Yeah, I think they have, they're waiting on some permitting from, I guess, DMR to do that. But the plans have been, I think the county has received the plans, and it's been spread on their minutes. And I think they're just waiting on notice to proceed from the DMR.
Okay, so we don't have a timetable on when that might begin at this point. Apparently they're waiting on permits or something of that nature. Okay. Golf carts, I would assume, Chief, they're not permitted to be driven on sidewalks?
I think there's been a lot of activity you might want to update on, on the last, especially out.
So there has been quite a bit of activity with golf carts lately, and they're not, they're not allowed to drive on the sidewalk. They, they can, they can be on the roadway as long as the speed limit is 25 miles or below, and they can cross major intersections if they need to. But with the problem that we've had lately, we've always had a problem with some children driving golf carts. But the problem we've had lately of, apparently a lot of people have just let their registration on a golf cart go. And so there was a, quite an influx of people that came over the past week or so to update their golf carts. And I'm sure a lot of them were stopped by officers. Some may have gotten tickets. So we had a quite, quite influx of people that wanted to update the golf carts.
All right, that tag, that registration tag has to be renewed annually. You call the police department. They'll either come to your home or if you want to truck your golf cart down to the police station, then you have the tag renewed. But there's, are some age restrictions. There are some requirements for that, that golf cart. Technically, they're referred to as low speed vehicles, and there are roads that they are prohibited from traveling on. So I, I drive out in some of these neighborhoods, and I see three or four kids. I know they don't meet the requirements, and I'm just really, having been in the school business, I'm, I'm really wary because at some point, some child is going to be injured or killed.
I think you had about 20 arrests, or 20 violations over the last 10 days or so.
That's right. And, and the restrictions you're talking about are just like driving a vehicle. They have to have insurance. They have to have a license.
Exactly.
That's the law.
Right. I have a website. It's on my website. It's been up there for a while. It's, all the regs are in plain English. That having been said, I just wanted to put that out there. And I would think that if there's a homeowners association or property association, property owners association, that you share that, that residents share that information for dispersal through those communities.
That would be a great idea.
It's, it's a ma, literally a matter of life and death. I mean, this is not a car protecting your child. It's an open golf cart, which is not much protection. Thank you, Chief. We, in a previous council meeting, we had talked about the Parks and Recreation Commission. And also in there, I think in that cluster of ordinances, was a beautification commission. I sure would like to see that started again. It's still on the books. And if the attorney, I don't know if you've looked into that, Mr. Abite, or not, but.
Yep. While I was rooting around in the park commission, I went ahead and took a gander at the beautification commission, which is also kind of interesting because it, it says for every thousand people that's in the city of Biloxi, there's a member. So I think when, at the time they started it, there were 44 members on this beautification.
So, so we need a bigger boat?
Well, the, the good thing from this table is it says all these people are appointed by the council.
All right, all right.
But that, that probably should be looked at as well because as of now, we should have about 49 members. But it looked like their main mission was an anti-litter type campaign. And so I would, I would expect they organized groups of neighborhoods to go out and, and sort of do trash pickups and things like that on, on the peninsula. Because this was all back when Biloxi was only a peninsula. We, we couldn't handle Wool Market back then.
Let me add my two cents regarding, I think we've got some movement as far as the Stennis Institute doing some things with regard to operation. And I think these kinds of things need to be addressed that are a number of years old. And, and, you know, with, with today's situation with technology and everything else, I think that some of the things, the operations need to be addressed as well in this study. I think that it was budgeted, and I'm not sure where we are with regard to meeting and discussing specs that need to be covered with that, that study.
Yeah, there's, well, that deals with the compensation study, I think you're referring to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's on tonight's agenda. It's, it's a lot.
I'm sure, you know, there's some components that we could, I mean, literally, I mean, take a look at, at some of these things. They've been on the books forever, and. Stennis could assist us in that.
I, I agree, and I would think one representative per thousand citizens. I mean, we may have to go back and tweak that, okay? But having said that, I just think the concept of a beautification commission, it would be great to get some assistance because Lord knows we need all the assistance we can get, particularly from a resident perspective, you know. We, we all should be doing something for our communities.
And I, back on the parks, I mean, it's about the time I was going to come up with some recommendations, but I've got some general recommendations, but given the amount of other things we have tonight, I'd ask that we maybe put that off a week or two. I mean, one main thing is like, they had nine members on this park commission. And, you know, we have, an obvious thing is why, why have nine? Seems like we should have seven, one from each ward. But just things like that, how they're appointed, and they actually had more regulatory authority back then. So I think they could, they could make, it looks like they could almost make recommendations to the city of what, what would be done and how parks would be paid for. So I'm, I'm not sure how things were done back then, but.
Well, we'll eagerly await our next council meeting on the 19th, and you can share with us your thoughts.
Thank you.
All right. The last thing is, I'd certainly like to welcome Chief Miller back. Mr. Chief, glad you're back. And also, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Glavin stole my, stole my line. Shake a leg. George is a dancer. He'll be dancing in no time. Stop, stop, stop. Thank you. Glad to have you both back. With, with that said, that concludes the council reports. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
The beautification program sat underneath the park recreation at one time. It just didn't seem to go anywhere. Because it was always the parks and recs had to clean it up anyway. So the group that was in the system with them, this is like 20 something years ago, it all turned into the parks and recreation, having to do it anyway. So I mean, if there's some way you can tie it in, that's how it was created originally. And it was for cleaning up the litter and stuff like that. Just beautiful. You know, it wasn't so much planting flowers. It was keeping the streets clean, all the side streets clean, which we're having a problem doing that right now. So that's, that's what was set up originally. In case y'all want a little bit of history of that. The other thing with the golf cart, the biggest problem they have is they run down the beach on the sidewalk. And that's, that's, that's a major problem. And that, you know, that's one of the things a lot of complaints we've had. Because you run down that highway on the sidewalk, them cars going by 50, 60 miles an hour. I'm thinking suck them off that road. I mean, they're not, they're not that big. They're not that heavy. So that was the biggest problem. The golf carts is riding down Highway 90 on the sidewalk. What's the legal? What is the fine for that, Chief, for that? Is that something you need to look at?
It, it's up to $1,000, but the, our ordinance is clear that no golf, no low speed vehicles are allowed south of Highway 90. Even Long Restaurant Row, if you, south of 90, you can't cross the north side to get across Highway 90. We didn't want to have any exceptions for Restaurant Row. Might be a good area for it, but then we'd have to start picking and choosing. So it's just across the board, no golf carts south of 90. That's a ticket.
I understand. We did that when we first passed that. We're talking about riding on the sidewalks like, like from the White House and riding down the sidewalk on Highway 90, not crossing it. That's the problem we have right now. People figure it's easier, that little golf cart get on the sidewalk. And that's tough. People figure it's easier, that little golf cart get on sidewalk and that's tough. I mean, that's, that's accidents waiting to happen. So, I mean, that's, that's what I'm talking about, not cross the road, we put that in there, you couldn't do that.
Now, they could, they could go down Father Ryan for most of the area there, but I mean, yeah, I guess they're, I'm not sure exactly where they're going, but if they really can't ride a sidewalk along Highway 90 either.
Listen, I'm not an object with the chief or law, you know, they're allowed on any of those. The other thing on the tree committee, the lady I called that, I told you about, uh, Fogo and you didn't pick her, so I called her and told her that we're sorry you wasn't picked, cause you said it was your call, apologized for that, you didn't call her back and tell her. So I said, just wait maybe in a few years, you want to put your name up again, we'll do it again. But I think you should always have enough to call them back and tell them you weren't picked, I chose somebody else and that's all I needed to hear. So the next time, we'll handle it a little bit different. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. That concludes the council's comments.
Quick question, I'm sorry.
I thought it concluded.
I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Shoemaker.
I apologize. Director Miller, quick question regarding the, you mentioned 321 calls regarding the homeless, and I know there's some hotspots in certain areas, but is that, was that pretty much throughout the city or was there any?
That was all over the city.
All over the city?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the public agenda. Item may if the clerk would read that item, please.
Public hearing to consider an appeal filed by Jared Fusco requesting the reversal of the planning commission decision to approve a requested tree removal application for the removal of 12 protected trees located at 308 and 309 Moffett Road.
Thank you. Let me explain the format, excuse me, let me explain the format for this public hearing. Uh, I'll ask Mr. Creel to come up in just a second to kind of, uh, make a statement about what, what brings us to this point, a little background. Uh, and after that, we'll allow the total of 30 minutes for the entire public hearing. The appellate, Mr. Fusco, will be, uh, using the initial 10 minutes, then the opposition, which I suspect will be Mr. Creel, perhaps the, the city arborist, uh, in opposition will have 15 minutes. And then following that 15 minutes, Mr. Fusco, uh, is permitted the last five minutes and then that concludes the public hearing. Then we'll move on to the policy agenda. So once, once Mr. Creel makes his, uh, statement about how we got here, um, the council clerk will hit the digital clock over there. So those who are speaking, if you, during the public hearing, if you would, just keep an eye peeled on that clock, all right? Okay, Mr. Creel, thank you.
The, uh, the project being appealed started in July of 2023, so Dr. Rains has been working on this for almost a year and a half now. He started out by coming in and going through the development review committee, which is where all projects start. He, uh, went through DRC, there were a number of revisions, so he made several trips to the DRC committee, a couple of the things that needed to be done in order to accomplish his project. If you'll recall, uh, his property was split zoned with the southern half being zoned, uh, NB and the northern half being zoned, uh, RM 30. So one of the first requests was to, uh, downzone the property so that it would all be, uh, RM 30, which is residential multifamily that allows 30 units per acre. Dr. Rains has 2.17 acres, which would allow 65 single family houses to be built on the property. He's only proposing 53. The second part of the, uh, process where it went through, uh, planning commission, city council was to vacate the northern end of Moffett Road. Moffett Road used to come in off of Pass Road and extend the entire length of Dr. Rains' property. So, uh, that went through the process, it got planning commission, got city council approval to vacate that part. There's still a small section of Moffett Road left that comes up to the, um, northern end of that little tobacco shop that's there on the side, but the rest of Moffett Road has been vacated and because Dr. Rains on both sides of Moffett Road, then that, all that property, uh, reverted to him. So the next step was to, uh, review the, uh, tree issue on the property. He had a number of trees on there and a number of them were protected trees. Uh, he is proposing to remove 12, uh, seven of which, which you're going to hear from our city arborist, were in, uh, poor condition and there were five that need to be removed just because of the development project and to have fire department access to get in there. The fire department needed to be able to make the radiuses in there and that, uh, required that a few of those trees be taken out. Dr. Rains submitted his information about the trees. Uh, Zach Harris, our city arborist, put together a, a presentation that's here, if you'd like to see it, that shows each of the trees and shows the condition of the trees and which ones that are going to remain and which ones are going to have to be removed. Let me just emphasize that Dr. Rains is a tree lover. He loves trees, he did not want to take any down, but he's wanting to develop his property. And the way that the ordinance is written, it's designed to, uh, look for or to, uh, set it up so that, uh, protected trees, we protect as many trees as possible, but still allow the developer to develop his property. So it's designed to find that balance between developing the property and protecting as many trees as you possibly can. Zach will go over how many trees remain on the property. Dr. Rains also hired his own arborist to go out and do an assessment of the trees that were on the property. So on, uh, the information, uh, after, after the, the tree information came in and was verified by the city arborist, he notified the tree committee who conducted a meeting and the tree committee, uh, voted to recommend approval of the project by a three to two vote. There are five members at the time and it was approved three to two and the tree committee, as they always do, uh, wrote a recommendation letter to the planning commission who hears all the cases of the removal of trees where you're removing five or more protected trees, you're required to have a public hearing. That hearing was held, uh, on, uh, October the 3rd and, uh, we have a number of people on the tree commi- on the, uh, planning commission who are also very concerned about trees. There was lengthy discussion about which trees were being saved and which ones were being removed and why they were being removed. But at the end of the lengthy discussion, the planning commission, uh, tree commission, uh, voted 14 to zero to approve the project. Um, the ordinance says that if anyone is aggrieved by a decision of the, uh, director of community development or the planning commission serving as the tree commission, that they have the right to file an appeal if they do it within 10 days. And within that period of time, Mr. Fusco filed his appeal, uh, stating that he was aggrieved and that brings us to where we are tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Creel, appreciate that. All right, Mr. Fusco.
I'm, uh, Jared Fusco and I'm the appellate for today's hearing to overturn the approval for the tree permit to remove 12 protected live oaks for the cottages at Moffett Road project. First off, thank you for your time, taking time out of your busy schedules to, to hear this case. Today's appeal was submitted on 4 October. On that day, I arrived before city hall opened, having just dropped my daughter off at school and I parked underneath the Danny Geis oak, a 300-year-old live oak tree that had been declared as a natural asset by Mississippi's Society of Trees and designated by the city as a majestic oak in August of 2023. Although I had seen this tree many times before, I could not help but contemplate its history. None of the majestic oaks in our city started out that way. At one time, they were just saplings, just children in the world of arborers and tree huggers alike. At any time in its history, the very old Danny Geis oak could have been trampled upon by unwitting travelers in its youth, killed by one of many hurricanes, or been removed by the desires of previous property owners who did not value it. But because none of these circumstances occurred, many past and future generations will enjoy it until it meets its natural end. You may be asking yourself, why does any of this matter? The future of civilization is dependent upon how we raise our children and what we leave behind, even if just saplings for their enjoyment and not our own. The fifth amendment of the constitution states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. The takings clause in this amendment is contextually related to eminent domain, which indeed requires compensation. However, with land development, local governments can take something of value through exactions from property owners without having to provide compensation, so long as it's determined that there is an essential nexus between the exaction and a legitimate government objective. Exactions on property owners are pertinent to today's hearing because without them, the restrictions caused by the tree protection ordinance and many other city ordinances, to include zoning, would be wholly unconstitutional. Biloxi's tree protection ordinance states the following objectives: protecting cultural heritage, protecting aesthetic qualities, preserving the natural environment, creating privacy, reducing glare, dust, heat, and noise, preserving air quality and maintaining, enhancing the quality of life in the city by protecting certain trees. In order for the city to achieve these objectives, a burden has been placed upon property owners that restricts their ability to enjoy their property by way entirely of their choosing, be it for development or otherwise, for the benefits of the general public, to include the property owner themselves by placing the same restrictions upon nearby property owners. In order to avoid arbitrary and/or capricious decisions for allowing tree permits to be issued, the ordinance provides review criteria for tree permits, which include the following: A tree of any species is in danger of falling or damaging structures or where the tree's roots pose a significant threat of damaging utilities or structures; A tree of any species that either encroaches into established easements, oh, established easements, is a detriment to access or obstructs required site distances; Or the city arborist provides written verification and photographic documentation that the tree is dead or dying; Or the removal is necessary to comply with stormwater regulations or to maintain public health and safety around utilities and infrastructure; Or the removal is necessary to address extraordinary circumstances such as weather-related emergencies or, and natural disasters. When an applicant submits for a tree permit, they are required to submit it with a drawing that includes seven items, one of which is a statement identifying the reason for the removal of each specific protected tree. If there are 12 protected trees being removed, there must be 12 reasons aligning to each of them. Although the applicant submitted general reasons for the removal of trees, to include development, the applicant failed to align each tree being removed with a reason that would allow its removal under the tree permit review standards in the ordinance. Additionally, the tree permit review standards were never discussed during the tree committee and planning commission meetings. Ultimately, assumptions were made by these organizations and no individualized determination for each tree could be made, thus any determination was arbitrary and subsequently unconstitutional. This leads me to one assumption of my own, they didn't see the need for proper legal justification for the removal of each tree because they did not care. The only time development is mentioned for removing protected trees is in addition to other requirements to include the need for a tree permit. In no case does the ordinance say that development and/or development alone is a justification for the issuance of a tree permit. Admittedly, this was probably not written as intended. However, this is the ordinance as it was enacted by city council in 2022. Mr. McGilvery and Mr. Shoemaker, I am sure there have been times in your careers that you had to enforce laws that could have been written better. In 1994, the Supreme Court ruled in Dolan v. City of Tegard that there must be an individualized determination based on rough proportionality in addition to an essential nexus when limiting property owner rights. For the tree protection ordinance, this means that the burden on property owners being forced to keep trees must be weighed on a tree-by-tree basis against the legitimate objective the ordinance seeks to provide. Accordingly, this is where Biloxi's tree protection ordinance oversteps its boundaries. By law and/or execution, by having set payments to the mitigation trust of two times the purchase price of a tree, flat mitigation ratios of two trees planted to one tree lost, and flat fines per tree for violating the ordinance. The, this treats every tree as having equal value, which completely lacks any individualized determination, but even our city acknowledges by the mere existence of the majestic tree program that not all trees are equal. In this case, the city arborist determined that 12 trees being requested for removal were indeed not all equal by assessing five as being in poor condition, two as being in fair condition, and five as being in good condition. The term "poor" to describe a tree is nowhere in the ordinance and is not synonymous with diseased, high-risk, or dying, which would match one of the standards for removing those trees. Additionally, the ordinance has an exemption for diseased, high-risk, or dying protected trees which removes mitigation requirements. Nevertheless, the applicant is set to mitigate at a ratio of two to one, 24 trees to 12 trees lost. Additionally, the city arborist stated during the tree hearing that, quote, "fair condition doesn't mean that the tree is diseased or dying," unquote. If all trees were labeled, labeled poor, were considered diseased or dying, that would leave only five out of the 12 trees requested for removal as meeting the standards for removal. However, the city arborist only described three trees as being diseased, high-risk, or dying. The other nine trees do not meet the standards for a tree permit. On the 26th of September, the chairman of the tree committee stated that, quote, "landowners may remove trees which limit development on property," unquote, and that the tree committee's job, quote, "is not to limit development in the city," unquote, which is guidance she was provided by the city's administration. However, again, this is not written in the ordinance, the city's administration would have you believe that it is more legally acceptable to require property owners to provide compensation to remove their own trees rather than deny them tree permits. But allow me to provide you an example from Justice Scalia, who wrote in a majority opinion for the 1987 Supreme Court case of Nolan v. California Coastal Commission. "We can all agree that it is illegal to yell 'fire' in a crowded movie theater, which is a limit on freedom of speech. If the government were to allow people to yell 'fire' in a crowded movie theater by paying a fee, the very law itself that forbids this act becomes unconstitutional." Why? Because if it, the reason it is illegal is due to safety, which is a legitimate government objective, but then you allow it through a payment to the government, the reason, safety, is no longer true. Rather, as Justice Scalia quoted from another Supreme Court case, "it becomes an out-and-out plan of extortion." City council, I'm asking you today to deny this tree permit to not only protect the environment between Pops Ferry Road and Pass, and Pass, uh, Pops Ferry Elementary and Pass Road, but the rights of all Biloxi citizens to include this developer and other developers as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. At this time, uh, Mr. Creel, and you had mentioned Mr. Harris, the arborist.
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to, uh, mention a couple of things before, uh, our city arborist steps up here to speak. Uh, I should have mentioned this in the beginning, uh, as part of Dr. Rains' application, he did provide us with a mitigation plan where he would plant 24 trees on the site, 24 protected trees on the side as the mitigation for the 12 that are being removed. Uh, I would also like to, uh, correct Mr. Fusco on, on one thing here in the ordinance. The section says, "removal of a protected tree. Protected trees may be removed if the landowner demonstrates to the director of community development one of the following conditions." And the title is, "removal of a healthy, protected tree." And the title is "removal of a healthy, protected tree." A protected tree is in healthy condition, and all of the following standards are met. So we're talking about healthy trees being removed. And here are the three criteria. The landowner is otherwise in compliance with the section, which he is. The protected tree prevents development of a lot in a way that limits building area to less than otherwise allowed or hinders compliance with the standards in Article 23-3, the intensity and dimensional standards. As I told you in the initial presentation, that Dr. Rains is not exceeding what's allowed on the property. He's actually proposing only 53 houses on the property where he could have had 65. So he is definitely within the dimensional and intensity standards. And then the last thing, that mitigation is provided in accordance with Section 23-6-4E4. So as long as they're meeting that criteria, healthy trees can be removed. You don't have to prove that all the trees are dead or dying in order to remove them. So with that, I would turn it over to our city arborist.
Good evening. So I'm pulling up the same PowerPoint that I presented at the Planning Commission meeting. This will be helpful, is just kind of a teacher's aid and visualization of some of the maps in the first few slides.
You might have to get a little closer to the mic. There you go. That's okay.
So this first slide, the red trees that are marked out are the ones to be removed. I tried basically to, not exactly, but show some of the canopy of those trees where we're actually talking about foliage that's up in the air and how big they are in relation to the property size. These are the trees to remain on site. Out of the 12 trees that are to be removed, 23 are proposed to be remaining. And I've also talked with the developer at length about designing the roadways to be pervious, designing the utilities to work around existing root systems so that we can keep those trees healthy. And when we agree to keep trees as an asset to a project, we like to keep them in the asset category and not move them to a liability category. So with pervious pavement and some of the foundation designs on some of the units, I think that we could maintain those trees in the asset category. Next one. This, while it is blurry, does kind of show the overlay of the proposed dwellings, as well as roadways, parking, and ingress and egress for the site. All of the trees that are marked in yellow, just the faint yellow blurbs, are the ones that are proposed to be removed. Which you can see, some of those are underneath proposed dwellings, as well as in the middle of ingress and egress, which was a large concern when they were at DRC for fire department access, meaning that we had to have wider roads, larger roads, for the trucks to turn in and out and that sort of thing. This is just kind of the good, poor, fair, and dead condition of the map. And you can see where the blue, purple, and green dots are more on the left side of the screen. And then there's two blue dots further towards the right. Those are the ones that are in fair-to-poor condition. So like Mr. Fusco said, fair condition doesn't necessarily mean diseased or dying, but it means a tree that's had some type of canopy loss. We're seeing dead limbs in the canopy. It's not as full as the tree next to it. So we kind of take that into consideration whenever we're analyzing those things, where we're really trying to preserve the assets on the site rather than the others. And then here's an overlay of the existing tree map. All the ones in yellow, you know, correspond to those dots on the screen where the ones that aren't marked in yellow or have X's are the trees to remain on site. This is looking due south. This tree is actually the boundary of where the Moffett Road was. So it's city beyond that. So this tree is actually on city property and not within the boundary of the project. Would you all prefer that I go tree by tree, because there's quite a few of them?
Just remember, you're limited by time.
I know.
It makes no difference to me. I remember this from the Planning Commission, but some of these folks here haven't seen it, so...
Gotcha. So this tree is kind of, I would point to it on the middle of the screen. It's all the way to the left under that furthest X. So you can see that little bitty rectangle where Moffett Road still is owned by the city. This is Tree 115, 22-inch live oak, proposed to be removed. This is, so we're working from south to north is the order of the photos. So this is right in the middle of the drive. And this is a cluster, one tree's dead, the other two are kind of those marked that were in fair-to-poor condition. So those are the ones that are smaller diameter and proposed to be removed. Those are also in the middle of the drive. This is another angle from the other side. You can see a thinning canopy, less foliage structure, less leaf structure, all of those things, all clues to them not being healthy. Tree 118, you know, some of these trees are not like our large oaks. We'll get to those as we move further north in the project. 117, 116. 116, I believe, is also, it should be in red. All of the trees that are marked with red lettering are the proposed removals. White lettering is to remain. Next. And this is 133. It's on the kind of southeast corner of the property. It's in between two units. So in working with the engineer and the developer, we've talked about doing a different foundation style in order to maintain those root systems under that tree. This is one of the larger, nicest trees on site. This will be somewhat in the middle of the turnaround as an entrance to the proposed development. It's to remain. The tree on the left, 122, is to be removed because that also is directly in the fire department access for the site, moving from east to west. Another angle of 122. This is one of the larger ones on site, also to remain. The benefit of this tree remaining is it has, with the exception of the limb jetting off to the left, it has mostly a high canopy that will mostly be left alone, meaning we're not going to go in and stub limbs off and further shock the tree. So it has a high likelihood of survival. And then this is the largest tree on the site that is proposed to be removed. This is a 61-inch live oak. You can see that it has vines on it, and most of the canopy goes out to the right side. That's because this tree experienced a breakout at some point in its life years ago where part of that canopy sheared out. And whenever I look at something like this, I definitely want to be very intentional about what we're keeping and what we're taking away. With a tree that has experienced a breakout in its lowest third of the tree, you're compromising the foundational element of that tree. You're opening up the heartwood, you're inviting insects and infection and things like that. Sure, right now, the tree falls very low on the risk matrix. There's nothing around it. You don't have vehicular traffic, dwellings, other infrastructure in there that could further regress the state of the tree. So, next slide. When we look at it, I think it's the next one. You can also see kind of middle of the trunk, down low, there's a large cavity. So that's the cavity that I get kind of worried about. We have, and it's limb-loaded all the way over where proposed structures are to go. So, again, trying to keep the tree in an asset category, not move it into a liability. Looking at these through an objective lens of if, when the property is going to be developed, what do we keep on site? So these are 147, 146. They are kind of in the middle eastern quadrant in some of the vacated portion of Moffett Road. Another angle of those three trees. One of them's kind of sneaking back there in the back, but it has large cambium scars, would never really grow into a great-looking tree for the project. These trees are on the northernmost portion of the property. They are to remain, and they're going to be kind of situated on the outside of dwellings, front porches, et cetera. Another angle of those. And this is, like I said, it was the same presentation that I gave to the Planning Commission. These trees seem to be mismarked whenever I looked at them. From what's on our site plan versus what's on the land, I believe the numbers were inverse. Common mistake. Oh, pack one. And so this is looking due north. The red and the yellow, I believe those trees are inverse, so it would be the tree on the right to be removed, not the left. But we are looking almost straight down the roadway. So Tree 150 would impede that fire department access based on the lot width, the road width that's required, and everything like that. And then this is looking due north, and that's the detention area that's on the site plan. Then here, this is facing due south. I tried to get somewhat of an overview of what trees we were keeping on the site versus what trees were proposed to be removed. This is almost looking right down the middle of the project, back towards Pass Road. So kind of give you an idea of the size reference of the trees that are staying on the property and the ones proposed to be removed. This is looking a little further east. Then back to the site plan, so... Do you all have any questions?
If we have any questions, it'll be at that point in the agenda when we vote on this matter.
For sure.
Thank you.
Got it.
Just, we've got one minute left, just real quick. The question to be answered is, did Dr. Rains do everything that he could do to save as many trees on this property and to still be able to develop his property? He's removing 12, he's saving over 20, and he's planting 24. So that's what it comes down to, anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Mr. Fusco, you have the final five minutes.
Thanks again. Most of you know, I wasn't born and raised in Biloxi. I grew up in Youngstown, Ohio, but as of this month, I will not have lived longer outside of Youngstown, Ohio than within. Although I did not grow up here, I cannot help notice a commonality between my hometown and Biloxi: grit and determination. Youngstown was for many years a steel mill town. Working in steel mills was an extremely tough and dangerous job, probably much not unlike working in Biloxi's fishing and seafood industry. My WWII veteran grandfather was one of those steel mill workers, but after many decades, the steel mills closed, and him and many other tough laborers had to go off and find other work. Although this devastated Youngstown residents, they were resilient, and after many years of persistence and hard work, there has been a revival that continues to this day. I have not lived here long enough to earn the honor of calling myself a Biloxian. But allow me to provide an outsider's perspective. Your city has survived a diminishing fishing industry, yet you have persisted. Your city has survived hurricane after hurricane, yet you have persisted. Your city has the same grit and determination that I recognize from my hometown, a grit and determination that I truly respect. Your fortitude has inspired me to get involved as many you have seen throughout the past months. Now, maybe I'm wrong in feeling this way, but I see these oak trees as a symbol of your grit and determination, not my own. Many who discuss or watch today's hearing are going to be labeling each of us something: pro-development, anti-development, pro-tree, anti-tree, which is not fair to you or me. I am not anti-development, and I am obviously not anti-tree. I am pro-law. Without our laws, we descend into chaos. What I believe both developers and environmentalists can agree on is that having standards and enforcing those standards is beneficial to everyone. I got time, I'll wait. Benefit to everyone. When developers invest in Biloxi, they should know the standards and know what the city will accept or reject based upon those standards. Likewise, if this city is committed to protecting trees, residents should believe that the city will follow due process and actually protect trees within the confines of the law. The city's protection-related ordinances need updated rather than be corrected, and I would love to assist if you so desire once this case is over. If the ordinance is fully enforced as it's written today, development would grind to a halt. However, today's decision should be based upon the laws as they are written today, as it will not only impact this property, but set a standard for others as well. I may not agree with what decision you make today, but I will respect you for having to make it nonetheless. I once had an old boss share a bit of wisdom with me on a day where he could clearly tell I was frustrated with the actions of others. He said to me, "Fusco, I don't believe they are a bad American." What he was telling me was that not everything should be attributed to malice or ill will, and not every decision should result in a viewpoint that an individual is somehow a bad person or a bad American. City Council, no matter what decision you make today, I don't believe any of you are bad people, bad Biloxians, and certainly not bad Americans. Thank you for your time today, and best wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Appreciate that. That concludes the public hearing. We'll now move to citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. We'll allow each individual who wishes to address the council speak for up to three minutes. Typically, most folks make their comments in a minute or two. There are, I suspect, a number of groups here representing different groups. Rather than half a dozen people come up and say the same thing, you might want to huddle real quick and just select a spokesman who can come up and share the feelings or make the comment for that group rather than just to be repetitive, given the time that we have this evening. So when you're recognized, come up to the chair. There's a sign-in sheet if you've not already signed in. Sign in, pull your chair up. You have to get very close to the mic. State your name and your address for the clerk, so she can get it for the record. She'll start the timer, she'll start the clock at three minutes. And when those three minutes are up, you will hear, just like the movies. So, having said that, is there anybody on my right, your left, who wishes to address the council? Anybody on this side of the room? Sure, come on up, Mr. Spinner.
Ivan Spinner, 440 Green Till Court, Biloxi, Mississippi. First, I'd like to thank the Chief of Police. We just had a really nice conversation out there, talking about the situation I'm here to address, which is the homelessness, especially in downtown Biloxi. It's gotten extremely, extremely bad, as everyone knows. You know, I believe downtown here is the most important part of Biloxi. You know, I believe downtown here is, is the most important part of Biloxi for tourism. You know, you have the casinos, hotels, restaurants, but to walk around the streets here at night is brutal. I mean, even in the daytime, it's brutal. But you know, you used to go, you used to be able to go to dinner at Mary Mahoney's or Fields or any of that, those restaurants and enjoy yourself and walk around, and now you walk around and you have homeless people really bothering people. Me, as the owner of the Bella, it's been brutal. I've had in the last few weeks, guests leaving, having to refund money, homeless people going crazy. I mean, it's just, it's, it's gotten out of control. And I know there's no easy solution, there's no answers today, but we need to get something done. If we need to form a coalition or do something, we need to do something. I spoke to the chief, I was even saying, "Hey, Biloxi has money." You know, maybe hire an outside security, working from date dawn, dusk to dawn, you know, and drive around the streets on, on bicycles. But you need to get them out of downtown here especially, especially at nighttime, because our reputation for guests and visitors, it's brutal. I mean, we've become like a San Francisco. And you know, some people might like it and, you know, I feel bad for the homeless, but I mean, it's gotten to a point that it's gotten really, really tough. And most of the people here today are small business owners in downtown Biloxi, and everyone's business is struggling. You know, I, I am at Propry Light Down the Road where Upstairs Downstairs was and just went to DRC and got approved to build a project. I mean, there's no way I can build a project or do anything with how it's being handled today. I mean, it's, it's, it's embarrassing. And I'm surprised the casinos, you know, having so much tourism, hasn't, hasn't helped or asked to do more. But, you know, us, as a city, we need to, we need to do better. We need to figure out a solution, even if you need to hire, hire outside sources to do stuff, just like we're doing with cutting grass in other areas. Let's, let's do something. Let's, let's make it a hot zone and let's get, get them out of this area, and then worry about somewhere else in the future. But we need to, we need to get downtown, back to a place where people can walk, they can shop, they can eat, and they can feel safe, because right now, nobody does. You know, Bart, who, who's a, you know, who owns the bicycle shop, the other day, he got in a fistfight. I mean, you know, can you imagine your own shop getting in a fistfight? It's just not, it's, we, we need to get it under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spinner. Is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Mr. Silvestro.
Hi, I'm Bob Silvestro. First of all, I'd like to welcome the chief back.
Get close to the mic.
I'd like to welcome the chief back. I'd like to thank a couple of council people who went in the woods there, Broadwater. Obviously, everyone knows the homeless issue is a problem, and I have some solutions. Not going to say I'm right here, but the city and people that are involved in the situation, there's so many people trying hard, but it's not working. Lot of resources. Nobody's here representing the people that are trying to help the homeless. Something going on, whatever it is, but I'm telling you right now, you need to nip this in the bud. There are solutions. There are solutions to this problem. And like Mr. Spinner said, a committee, whatever it is, can't kick the can down the road anymore. As most of you know, you saw the video I sent of me sitting in my yard and somebody unloading 15 shots of a gun while we're working. Somebody was, an issue happened on one of our streets today where a project was shut down because somebody who has no reason to be in Biloxi is building homes in the back of his home for people, I don't know what's going. Something's going on, and we need to stop the people coming here, help the people that are here that are our people. If you want solutions, we can't blame the police for everything. The governor should be ashamed of himself for not fixing the mental health problems that are here. This is where this starts and ends. I want to retire and do things. I love Biloxi. They say God gives you no more than you can handle. Well, it's getting pretty close. I came from North Carolina, that's where my family is. I've lost a lot of friends and family, but this is where I am right now. And if you guys want to solve this problem, I have some ideas. That's all I'm saying, and it will be solved. It might take a year or two, but we will stop the trend and we will get it going the way it is. And you can't, we don't want them in East Biloxi, we don't want them in West Biloxi. We want them to be productive members of society or get on the westbound Greyhound. That's all I'm saying. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristin Statura Allen, broker associate with Property Management Division of Bush Realty Group. My address is 1715 25th Avenue in Gulfport, Mississippi. I manage the Bella, and I wanted to speak real quick on the issues that we've experienced. As Mr. Spinner said, we have had to refund several guests. Not only have we had to refund them, we still have to come out of pocket to have the suites cleaned because they've already been in them, but they've been scared off by a homeless person at the front door, on the ground, foaming, speaking to themselves and whatnot. We have a gentleman here from October 28th at 9:51 a.m. I have him on my cameras 72 times. That is between October 28th at 9:51 a.m. to today at 3:50 when I last looked at the cameras. I'll be happy to present those to you guys so that you can see them. I have another guy who comes in, talks to Leonardo DiCaprio hanging on the walls. These people are scaring my guests off, okay? On Friday, we will be filming a, a show for HGTV and the Food Network. Is this how you want Biloxi represented? Because it's not what I want to see. I don't want my city represented that way with homeless and, and this gentleman, you know, on the TV talking to the cameras, speaking about space and, and the CIA and everything else. We have had a break-in there back in January. We have had someone try to get into every one of our outdoor guest suites, and they have damaged our door frames, our patio furniture has been stolen, they have urinated and defecated all over the place out there that we have to clean up. This has got to stop, please, because it's affecting our ratings, our rankings, our reviews, and it's affecting our business. I, I don't know the solution. I do want to give my, my hats off to, to the PD. They are doing everything they absolutely can, but y'all, they're tired too. They are getting beat up and so are we. We've got to find a solution, we, to, to the problem. We've got to stop it somehow, some way, because before long, you're not going to have any businesses left in Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Statura. Anybody on my left, your right, wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lally.
Sorry.
My name is Wendy Lally. I live at 324 Feary Drive. I am also the Ward Five Tree Committee member. I'm here regarding the tree permit hearing, the appeal to cut down 12 live oak trees. This appeal has been filed on the basis of procedural violations. Let me share some information pertinent to this appeal. The Tree Committee met on September 26th. All five current members were in attendance, as well as the city arborist. We walked the site with the arborist. He shared information about the trees and offered his knowledge about the 12 live oak trees that the developer requested to have removed. I would like to note the following procedural violations that occurred during this meeting. Number one, the site visit meeting was never called to order and the meeting was not formally adjourned. Number two, during the site visit meeting, I wanted to discuss the recommendations being made to the planning commission, as well as plans to compromise with the developer to save a few trees and also let him keep a few trees and cut down a few trees. The chairperson would not allow me to speak or share my thoughts. Rather, number three, the chairperson merely asked me if I was going to vote yes or no to cut down all 12 live oak trees, and for the record, I did vote no. Mayor and City Council members, procedures must be followed during Tree Committee meetings. By the Tree Committee holding a site meeting that did not follow procedures, these 12 live oak trees are now in danger of being cut down without any regard for their beauty or history or value to our community. There was no opportunity to work with the developer to find a compromise that saved trees while also allowing him to develop his own property. I believe our duty as a Tree Committee is to uphold the laws, follow procedures, and thereby promote smart and thoughtful development within our city. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you for allowing me to serve on the Tree Committee, and I also agree, the homeless situation has gotten out of hand. This is me speaking as a resident of Biloxi. I live in Ward Five, I'm very close to the bar, barbed wire property. I drove past the entire Pass Road section of that on my way today. It was a gentleman, barefoot, in shorts, no shirt on, walking across Pass Road towards the West Biloxi Library at 5 o'clock at night. That's not normal. My husband is a runner, he at least has shoes on. This gentleman was just walking blatantly across Pass Road as people are going to vote. This is a problem not just in East Biloxi, not just in West Biloxi, it's a Biloxi problem. And we've let it get out of control and it's got to be fixed. I don't know how. I also agree, I would like to be part of the solution and not the problem. Thank you for everything you do. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lally. Anybody else on my right? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Mike Massey. I'm co-owner of Altered Reality Brewing. I'd like to also thank Chief Miller for the good conversation we have outside. I think he had a lot of good ideas. However, I do agree with Ivan, the, the homeless issue has gotten totally out of control, especially as it relates to the downtown area. This weekend, the mayor mentioned the LSU baseball game. I've got a picture here of the unofficial ambassador of the game, that every person walking down the street had to walk by and be hassled by this gentleman. There were thousands of people here. We probably had an uptick of 200 people at the brewery. Every single person that walked in that door mentioned the homeless issue. It has gotten out of control. I don't claim to have the answers, but we have got to take action on this. It is, it's reaching a boiling point. It's killing our business, it's killing Ivan's business. Frank and Tim, who own Pisano's Pizza and Empanola, are also, also suffering as well. It's, it is totally getting out of control. We lead a family-friendly run through the city every Thursday night. We have families, we have children, and we're constantly having to run by homeless people. We had a group, we average anywhere from 40 to 80 people on these runs. We had a group show up, we're running through, we watched a guy shoot up in the park. I had 80 people with us that night, and there was a guy shooting up in the park. That is ridiculous. This has to stop. Like I said, I don't know the answers, but I know there's a solution, and I, I don't want to bug the police all the time. I know they have other things to do, and I appreciate them, but we, we've got to work better and we've got to find a solution. And thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Anybody on my left, your right? Mr. Dubaz.
Mark Dubaz from 432 Jordan Drive. I didn't come here tonight thinking I was going to talk about this. However, for three years, I was the veteran homeless outreach social worker for the VA. I lived with, with the homeless on the streets, trying to locate veterans, to bring them in and provide them with housing and services. My experience is that, this is my three years of experience, I was at all of the kitchens, feeding people, asking, "You're a veteran, you're a veteran," whatever. I was focused on those folks, but I interacted with all the other folks. The people who are out there, who do not want to come out of the woods, are individuals with major mental health issues, mainly schizophrenia and bipolar and major depressive disorders that do not respond to treatment. They, they are the people who are problematic. They're mentally ill, and they all have poly-drug abuse issues. They're self-medicating. The people who we deal with, such as families and as such, they don't want to be out there. They want to be housed and want to get their lives back together. We offered the veterans an apartment, and we'll put them in an apartment, we'll furnish that apartment, and we will not request them to do anything. However, they will be assigned a social worker, and that social worker will do everything they can to help them with treatment. The city cannot do this. It's extremely expensive. I, and I'm only saying this, I'd just like you to understand what you're dealing with. You're not dealing with people who want to go out there and just do drugs. The very vast majority who are out there and won't come in are mentally ill with poly-drug abuse problems. That's the issue. That's a difficult issue to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubaz. Anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to comment or address the council? Sure, Mr. Fusco, come on up. You have three minutes. You'll fill them.
No, um, so, my man's got jokes. No, I had given a copy of my speeches from earlier to the clerk. I would like them entered into the record. Perfect, I got the, the head shake that I have said that properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Anybody on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Yes, sir.
My name is Ricky Keller, 806 Darius Drive, Biloxi, Mississippi. I just wanted to speak and comment to something that Councilman Glavine brought up, brought up earlier about the zoning issue, Brody Road and Cedar Lake Road. There are, by my count, around nine residential areas, all of which live in location or in walking distance to Biloxi High, Middle, and North Bay Elementary. My wife is at home watching our four-year-old, his name is Sebastian. He'll soon be going to North Bay Elementary. At some point, I had hoped that from our, our residence in Henjin Place, which is a neighborhood just across from Destiny Plantation, that he would be able to have age-appropriate independence, in, in, in so much as walking to school at some point during his adolescence. That's not safe to do at the moment, and I believe that any commercial development in the area would make it less safe. There's no, there are no sidewalks from Lamie Street to what I think is Cedar Lake. I see many people riding their bicycles, sometimes walking. It could be a very well-walkable area of the city with all of these communities and of the nine residential communities I mentioned. Some of those are, are apartment buildings, mobile home parks, but many are single-family home residences. Only one of them has a walkable sidewalk area to three, through these schools areas. So, I'd just like to speak in opposition, simply because it's just not the right zone for any commercial involvement. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. You signed in?
Ah, I will. Thank you.
Okay, that's all right. Anybody on my left, your right, wish to speak? You didn't, you didn't have to give him your seat. Thank you again, Mr. Keller.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Matthew Hostelman. I live at 1584 Noel Court in the Pops Ferry Landing Community. I wanted to speak on policy agenda 4C, the zoning on Brody and Cedar Lake. As, as the gentleman over there spoke to earlier, there is only a two-lane road and a three-way stop at that corner, and there's not, I don't really see how a commercial development would, really have the infrastructure to start doing that development in that area. I also feel that, based on the application, they said that, they explained that there has been a change in the character of the neighborhood that would allow this zoning change to be effective. Now, the only change I've seen in our neighborhood is more of the same, more single-family residential zones, more, you know, the, the leisure in the park being updated, and I don't really understand how this zoning change could be made effect based on our policies that were laid out here. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, if I might want to say, thank you Kenny and the team that went up to North Carolina to help those people. You really show the spirit of our city. I mean, we've, we've all personally had to endure that before, and it's really great to see that we get to pay it forward. to see that we get to pay it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Is anybody on my right, your left, wish to speak? Nobody on your left? Yes, ma'am?
I tried. My name is Minister Patricia Kemp, 366 VR Street, Biloxi. I've been here a long time. All right, the first thing, what, seven, seven, seven or six? The one that got Pop Ferry where Ms. Brown's laying there? It do needs to be cleaned and towed out. The city used to do it. I don't know if they still do it. But they need to do it because that's where the homeless are getting in the woods to have a home. And older people are passing down the sidewalk. So, for their safety, they need help. We need help in Biloxi, period. And the other part I wanted to say, that the homeless needs a place to stay, but how are you going to handicap a person that's already handicapped when you can't help them? Now, the VA give them everything they need, but these people are walking and half of them get checks and they have places to stay. But you got some out there don't have anything. So I just wanted to say, the children gets up early in the morning for the bus over there on Fairmont at 6:30. And, you know, little kids really don't have no business out there at 6:30 in the morning before the sun come up to catch a bus by themselves. Their parents need to be whooped. And I'd just like to say that I was here for a certain occasion, but when y'all start to talk about different places, and I've been here all my life and I've seen this stuff that happen, something do need to be done about it. All right?
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
I already signed the sheet back there. I still need to sign this one too? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, please. Thank you. Anybody on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Last call, anybody on the right side of the room? Okay, anybody on the left side of the room? My right, your left? And, yes, sir?
Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Good evening. My name is Donovan Scruggs. I'm representing Sharon Myers, who had filed for the rezon of the property there on Brody Road and Cedar Lake, south of Pops Ferry. I really didn't intend to speak tonight, but there has been a couple of comments made about that property and I just wanted to address the reason for the request to rezon. Primarily, if you look at the context of the property over the past 20 years, there's been a significant change in the character of that area. The constant growth of the Biloxi High School to the west of the site, as well as the, the e-fitness facility to the south that we know is going to change even more in the near future. One thing that is, I think, really worth noting is that the comprehensive plan of the city identifies this property as a regional activity center. These, there's only about three or four regional activity centers noted in the comp plan throughout the entire city. And these are supposed to be your more intensely developed areas. So, the rezoning was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and we've just tried to upzone it for, to accommodate some of the residential uses to the east and west and the school to the, to the, to the west as well. So, I know this is a first reading. I know no actions taken tonight. I would love to meet with anybody who wants to talk in more detail about the plans or what we can do with the property, but I just wanted to, I guess, speak my mind since everybody, since others were speaking theirs. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs. Anybody else in the back of the room? Last call, anybody wish to address the council? Okay. Citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk, there are several items, A, B, and C, that are first readings and these are procedural readings. If the clerk would read item A, please?
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to designate 856 Division Street as City of Biloxi landmark.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
By Mr. Guines and a second by Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that brings us to item B. The clerk would read item B.
Ordinance to grant a zoning map amendment to approve a PDI planned development in Phil District Master Plan for 458 Back Bay Boulevard.
I'll move it.
Here's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Guines. Thank you. If the clerk would read item C?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for 12.5 acres from limited business to neighborhood business for unaddressed parcels at the northeast corner of Cedar Lake Road and Brody Road.
I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? There being no second? Procedurally, this matter does not move forward. Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Scruggs, you don't need to come up. Just take note that there was no second, so the motion for a first reading failed. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. That is item D. This is a second reading, so we'll be voting on this. If the clerk would read item D, please?
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to designate 281 Main Street as a City of Biloxi landmark.
Thank you. The motion was made by Mr. Guines and there was a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
Yes, we finally made it here. Thank the Lord. Mr. Tyrone, would you please come on up for me real quick? This man is one of the, what we would call one of our icons of Biloxi, right there on Main Street. As you know, I come from a family of 11. I'm number eight and there was six boys. And this man cut all six of, all, all the boys' hair for what, at least 60 years? 60 years of cutting each one of our heads? All the way down to me not even having hair anymore?
Did a good job, Felix. You did a good job on yours.
Any words, Mr. Tyrone, that you want to give the council?
Yeah, I just first want to say that I want to thank each and every one of you for your consideration in this. I've been steady and let my team, I would like my team to stand up.
Yes, indeed. That's all the key.
Just to say, just in my family, and starting with myself, I have 63. My daughter have 43. And my son have 40. And my wife have 33. Years, that's close to 200 years serving this, this entire coast. Because we had people coming from, all of them from Pearlton to Bay St. Louis, Wiggins. But I want to say truly, this has been a remarkable place. And coming off a farm, plying a mule and picking up clippers, you can imagine the difference. They asked me how long I'm going to be in the shop. I said until. Right. But Godspeed. And one day I may be able to, couldn't tell the entire coast how grateful and thankful for them being a, a contributor, serving longevity, right, in my church family. And then again, I want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tyrone. That concludes my.
All right, Mr. Glavine, any comments?
I have none.
All right.
Very nice.
Any other discussion, comments?
I have the question.
Then we'll call for the question. All in favor of approving the ordinances presented? Approved on a 6-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyrone. It's done.
All right, that brings us to a res, excuse me, if the clerk would read item E?
Resolution to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Biloxi Planning Commission to remove 12 protected trees upon parcels located at 308 and 309 Moffett Road.
I'll entertain a motion.
Did you not say that Dixie would prefer to have this table?
Yes, Councilman Newman is not present tonight. She would prefer to have the matter table till our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. That would be November 19th at 1:30. It's in her ward and pretty much it's a courtesy. We've always done things like that in the past. But I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it to table it.
To table. All right, so there's a motion to table by Ms., yes? Okay, so we need a motion first. Okay. So we need a motion. Mr. Lawrence, you make that motion to get it on the table.
Yes, I move.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by?
Mr. McGilvery.
Mr. McGilvery. And we'll entertain discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
I'll make the motion that we should table this for two weeks until Ms. Newman is back.
All right, so there's a motion to table. Second. Until the next council meeting, November 19th. And that's a second by my, by Mr. McGilvery. Any further discussion?
None.
Any comments? There being none, all in favor to table the motion till the next council meeting, November 19th? Is approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, item F. If the clerk would read that item, please?
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plan approval for three unaddressed parcels fronting Oleander Lane.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Ten more, if you want to make that motion. All right, so there's a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. McGilvery, any comments?
Just one, just one question. Ms. Christie, the access to Lot 2 entrance and exit on that property?
Let me look at the, let me look at the plat. Yes.
Director Creel, maybe you could?
Yeah, I was about to say, I don't know. I thought that was all one lot.
Four lots, not three.
Director, can you explain that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. What it, what it is, is that Lot 1 and 2 are being bought by the same buyer and their intention is to build one house on each of those lots and there'll be, we'll make sure that there is a, a connection going from one to the other, a perpetual easement to get from one to the other.
So there's only four going to be total?
There's four lots total. It's, it says three unaddressed parcels. What they're doing is moving from three parcels to four parcels.
Okay.
Well, Jerry, which ones you bought?
Sir?
Which ones are bought? The ones that you separated or that they already separated?
Uh, said you, two of them they're getting ready to build on? No, 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 they're not getting ready to build. What it is, is that there's a couple from England that want to buy the, the long lot that's being divided into two, that's on the east side of the property. But they want to build two houses there. So I told them, well, it'll either have to be subdivided into two lots or you'll have to ask for a zoning change that would allow two houses to be built on there. They didn't want to go the subdivision route, so basically what they're doing is dividing that long lot into two, two parcels.
Is that the right thing to do?
Yes, sir, it is.
And now the other two, the three and four are way bigger lots.
Right.
One of them, so I mean, nothing happened to them. They all took 7.5?
Right, the, the developer that's doing this is going to be building a Lot 3 and then the lot that's furthest to the west. One of the reasons it's so big is because it has a lot of wetlands on the west end.
Yeah, that's like three and a half acres. That's the biggest size, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glavine.
I have no other comments.
Anything, any comments or questions from the council? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution is presented, approved on a 5-0 vote. Note that Mr. Guines is out of the room. That brings us to item G. If the clerk would read item G, please?
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat for Petty Boy Town Home subdivision for property located at 02678, 2684, and 2685 RuPaula Fox.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's a second by Mr. Glavine. Ms. Labata, I almost called you Levitard. Almost, almost. Ms. Labata, you, there are several letters in our packet. And this is a 62 residential lot development of townhomes.
Yes.
And it's specifically mentioned that the city will not accept any infrastructure or utilities within the private property of this subdivision. And there's a letter from the engineer.
Yes. They have, they have the option on the plat to come back to us later and ask us to accept those utilities.
Okay.
They reserve that right.
And it's?
For years, yeah.
So what, what is the significance of your letter? The only reason I ask that is because typically we don't see a letter from you under these circumstances. My guess is that?
Yeah, y'all should, y'all should, we normally write a letter for every final plat.
Do you, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
But, but this, this is unusual, that usually the city accepts?
Yeah.
This infrastructure if they're up to the city standards, but that?
They, they weren't.
I take it that this may not be the case?
That's right. We didn't inspect it during construction like we normally would do. We were under the assumption that these were all going to be private utilities and they came back to us later. And so they weren't built to city right-of-way public utility standards. So, they've elected to keep them for a few years, see how, make sure there's no issues and then they have the option to come back to council later.
But we've also had other developments with similar circumstances when it comes to the infrastructure and we've had a couple recently. So it's not unheard of. Maybe a little unusual, but it's not unheard of.
They on those, those other, I think there was two other ones before this. We did the same exact thing.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I ask you a question.
Yes.
So nothing been built?
I don't know if houses have been built. That's, Jerry, no.
Okay, so the accident, for, and every time we get in these townhouses that start separating, is how we're getting so much trouble. We wind up with these shrimp camps and bad-looking houses. And there's 52 of them. I need to find out exactly what they're looking for and then they're going to come back next time with a total different game. That's how we got in two years of trouble with Elliot.
Yeah.
Same thing, five different resolutions. So when you start this game, you start chopping it up, you have a problem. So I can't support anybody. If they don't have nothing now, I can't support them.
Well, and I think this is?
I thought we'd been, did this for the last two years and been nothing but trouble.
All right.
This is the traditional townhome development where the townhomes will be connected. You know, there'll be multiple buildings, but they'll each be connected, not be divided like some of the houses that you've seen with Elliot Homes, so.
And as far as we know, the engineer, Mr. Fountain, or the developer, has no plans to come back and, and build standalone units?
No, sir, he's, he's ready to move forward and get started on the construction of the townhomes. Now, he's just waiting on this to be approved so they can move forward.
All right, okay. Mr. Lawrence?
So he's building a townhome?
Yes, sir, the tr, the traditional attached townhomes is what he's building.
And so what she said about him coming back and changed his mind, that's how we got in trouble with Elliot. He come back, we were doing townhomes there, everybody was happy and we went to two years of hell with him and wound up with trash. So I mean, I don't want the same thing to happen here again. I mean, I have no problem with the bill of townhome. Fine, but this stuff is changing every few months because of the market change that this garbage that keeps standing on TV. I'm not going for that. If he gonna do that, I'm not supporting anything like that. If they building townhouses, I have no problem with that. with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing to add.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Mr. McGilver?
I have one question, Director. I'm sorry. The- I think Ms. Christie mentioned that in two or three years, they could come back and try to turn the infrastructure utilities o- back over to the city?
They can ask. They have the right to come back and ask the city to accept it. Uh, because they were put in without being inspected during construction, uh, the- the compromise is, well, let's watch them for three years and make sure that they're gonna hold up. And in three years, we would know whether there are problems with the utilities or not, but then they would still have to come back if they wanted us to accept them and make application, and the council would have to vote to approve accepting those. And at that time, Ms. Levit- Ms. Labata can give y'all a report on any problems we may or may not have had with the utilities.
So at some- some form, they still do some inspection. Am I understanding that right? Or when they come back three years later and the- the- the building's built, how do we know if they're up to code?
The- you talking about the buildings or the utilities?
The utilities, sir.
Utilities.
Okay, uh-
Infrastructure.
Yeah, if- if there are- if there are problems, if there are problems, we'll know about it, uh, usually within the first year. But because they've agreed to go ahead and extend it for three years, we'll be doubly sure whether or not there are a problem there, so.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, Jerry. So I'm just thinking ahead. What if, who knows? We have an election coming up. There may be seven new faces here. And, uh, what if the- the three years from now, um, this developer, the engineer, comes and said, "We'd like the city to accept the infrastructure." What if the- what if the council at that time says no? If- if that happens, then who's responsible for repairs that may be needed and paying for those repairs?
The homeowners association. If it's- if it's built out, then the homeowners association would be responsible for any of the infrastructure that's in there, because it would all remain private unless the city votes to accept it as public.
Right, and I'm assuming that there would be, I mean, I'm not a realtor. I would assume there's something in a- a deed or something that explains that clearly?
Yes, it's- it's on the- it's on the plat.
All right, thank you.
Everything they build, the streets and everything, they building.
Yes.
Yes.
Everything they're doing, all that, it had nothing to do with the city.
That's right.
Okay. And they building town homes, then I'm- I'm all for that.
Okay.
All right. All right, there being no further questions. All in favor of the measures presented. It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Thank you, Ms. Labata. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Second.
To Lawrence. Glad to be back making all these motions. Second by Mr. Guines. Okeydoke. Uh, we'll start. Mr. Lawrence, any questions on particular items?
Uh, yeah, um, uh, Pete on B is, uh, yeah, I believe it's B. The coalition thing back at the- we- how much money does this cost in this this time? That's how we ever get from them. It's cost, cost, cost. I'm not voting any more money.
B is in boy or D?
Yes.
B.
Question is, what- what is this? What's the cost of the resolution?
Yeah, well, the cost of the no. We keep paying in. We could've put money back in our pocket and took all the money we lost.
Yeah, I think the budget, this dealt with the, um, the $250,000 that was budgeted, but they did not- it wasn't spent. Only, um, I think 90,000 or so was spent.
We did that last time. We already did that once.
I think we're just- I think we're just making it clear that it's available if needed again, rolling it forward. Cause that's what the MOU said, and that's what the county passed the same thing.
So you dealing the same $250,000 from the first time?
Yeah, it's nothing-
We spent $93,000 or something like that. And what we do, until they had that money left, roughly $160,000 is sitting there.
Well, it's available. It's available because-
They can't use it unless they come back to us, or what?
Yeah, they're- they're managing it through the county, but the, um, the case that's going on that was with Judge Garola, that's- that's undergoing an appeal right now. But I wouldn't expect, I mean, for the next fiscal year, I really wouldn't expect more than $50,000 or so to be- to be expended from this point forward.
So what- that's why I couldn't quite understand, cause I thought we just did all this. So what are we doing with this? $160,000. I mean, is this just money we could dig available for them to use?
I think the MOU we had with the county and us, and the other real- joined in it as well, it just said there would be X amount available in the next fiscal year. We're just- we're just reflecting that in our budget to what the MOU says, because we're doing the same thing the county did.
So this is just a case for the- for the appeal? This is money spent strictly for attorney fees, isn't it? I mean, it's nothing else? It's fighting a case?
No, I think it's mainly the case and also the, uh, the outreach and some of the advertising with, uh, focus group, I believe is part of it as well.
Well, I'm trying to figure it out. So I mean, what are you suggesting? Are we supposed to just go along with this, or you have the legal?
Yeah.
Should we just hold back on this money?
Well, I don't have an issue with it, because somebody's gotta do it. It's basically Biloxi and the county. I think at the end of the road, there's some other alternatives or some other options down the road of some potential future suits on a contingency basis. If those come through, Biloxi and the, uh, county would get first recoveries of those. So.
So are we suing for money?
Not right now.
Are we supposed to have loss? What are you- what are you gonna gain?
Right now, there's an appeal over the- whether or not the Fisheries Act was violated by the Corps of Engineer opening the spillway, which killed the dolphins.
Yeah.
So it was a- it was a suit under the Marine and Fishery Act, and Judge Garola said, uh, we didn't have standing under some legal principle. And, uh, the decision was made by the county and the coalition that at this point, it doesn't- it's not gonna cost a lot to appeal that. Let's go ahead and appeal that to the Fifth Circuit. So that's- that's really the only legal action that's going on right now.
This is my question with all of us sitting up here. Are we trying to run a money line to get some money, or are we just appealing the decision?
We're appealing the decision.
So then to not really pay is involved in being owed to the city. We lost. All the stuff we lost, you know, the- the restaurant, the restaurant. Everybody was shut down. I thought maybe that's what you were trying to get to.
Well, that-
I choose.
That's a potential down the road, but- but we'll talk about that. We could go in executive session at some point and talk about some long-range plans, but, you know, I'm not gonna lay that out right now.
I know y'all wanna blow this, even wanna hold it back and meet with Peter first.
Well, I have a- I have a question, just to be sure that I understand it clearly, because we had appropriated $250,000 in fiscal year '24, right? And we didn't spend all of that. Um, the unspent balance, if I understand it correctly, was, as you said, Peter, about $150,000, $152,000. Only $97,000 was spent. Subsequently, I think we approved a resolution here just in the last couple of months where we voted to appropriate $250,000 every year, and it would accumulate year after year, correct?
I believe so, but I think we just- we just made that for the next fiscal year. I don't think we- we didn't go beyond the next fiscal year.
All right, so what- what we're doing here is, I think, clarifying that we're appropriating another $97,000 since that was what was spent to comprise that $250,000. That's my understanding.
You have $153,000 left.
Now, we- we had- we had $153,000 that wasn't spent last year.
Right.
Okay, they'd spent $97,000. So what we're doing is- is replenishing that $97,000 for fiscal year 2025, correct?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I kinda read it as we're- we're just making sure that $152,000 is available-
Right.
If needed in the next fiscal year. And then George and I may agree on that. I don't know.
Okay, so we appropriated $200-
Dude, that's- that's pretty bad, huh?
We appropriated $250,000 in fiscal year 2025, and what we're saying is, we wanna make it clear that that $153,000 from fiscal year 2024 is still available, correct? Maybe- Okay, well, that's- that's why I'm- That's why I'm asking. Maybe we oughta have an executive session then, maybe on the 19th?
That's fine, yeah. Let's do that. And I'll get- I'll get all the numbers and we'll get the numbers straight.
Okay.
So you want me to just table it until we head to executive session? I'll do that.
Right, we'll do that. When we go through all of these, we'll come back and do exceptions. You can make your motion to table at that time. What other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, D. D is another $11,000 for an audit that we haven't seen. We don't have. I'm trying to figure out if we're ever gonna get one. So I'm not having- I'm not paying anybody another 11-4, cause they gotta break and do some more stuff to get something right. We should have this audit. Let's- let me just- let me tell you something. The law states, we're supposed to have it by June the 30th. We haven't had yet one in the last two years. It's nine months from October the 1st. It's fact, it's law. June 30th, you're supposed to have an audit. We hadn't- we didn't have it the last two years. I finally got the digital thing we got on the- the machine for '22. And that, we still hadn't- they just put this thing down for June of '24 they started. That's not right. You have to have this in place. So, I mean, I can't- I'm not gonna support anything, and we don't have any information to look at, nothing to see, and nothing to go on. So, just go ahead.
You want an explanation of this- this question?
Please.
There were four major programs that every two years required to be tested, and that was the additional, uh, money and additional time related to these four major programs like ARPA and then some of the other things that exceeded $829,000. That's the reason it has to be tested. So I mean, you know, additional testing as far as that, and I think we've responded, uh, based on, uh, there's a number of, uh, Gadsby rules, uh, that- that really require these four programs to be tested. That's the- that's the reason that. And if some of the reasons prior to it were things that were uncovered from 2009 that got over the last two years, drug this stuff out. Again, my- in talking with the auditors and talking with addressing these amounts, that again, we're still looking for the next audit, which ABL will be doing our next audit, to be done in March, by the end of March of next year. That's my, uh, intention, and that's, you know, we're in sync with that. This will not hold. That, as soon as we do a trial balance at the end of this month, according to Diana needs to give you, we'll move forward with the next audit.
Okay, so my understanding is that we- we thought we'd be auditing one program, but we really had to audit four major programs, our three additional major programs.
Tested every two years, and we never crossed that threshold in prior years.
Okay, so it's got- it's gotta be done one way or another, right? Because these are all federal funds, I'm assuming?
Yeah, major programs.
Okay, and they've gotta- they've gotta be audited. So $11,400 would cover the cost of this additional audit work.
Right.
Okay, uh, will- will we get an audit for fiscal year 2023 after these additional programs are audited? So that could be, do you know how long that'll be?
There's three new ones.
Three months though?
I mean, the contracting assumed there'd be one major program, so there's- there's actually four. So we got those three new ones, and I think, I think they everything. What do you- you got any? Rachel, you know something?
Address a little.
And- and the thing that she has been chasing, the booklets are about that thick each one, right?
So we'd receive the audit even with these three additional programs in the next several weeks? Three weeks, roughly? The end of November? I'm figuring early December, whatever. Okay.
I asked a question. Rachel, if this supposed to happen another two years, how come this one already in there? If we supposed to do this every two years anyway. Get up there to the mic so we can hear you.
Let me address that. Okay, this is a program that just crossed this threshold. This the amount of money that was- revenue was recorded, and that's the reason why the- it was required to be tested.
What did you say about days and something like that?
That's the threshold, the federal threshold that we have to test this program. We never got- we never were in that situation. And this was the first time.
We have contractual provisions of $3,800 per major program. We've done it that way because we don't know how many major programs we're going to have because of different fundings that we've received federally. Includes ARPA. There's ARPA, there's FEMA. They call it, uh, HPCC. It's essentially everything that's MDOT, and then the Restore Project. All of those together, because of the amounts that we received in '23, exceeded that threshold, and we have to do this. We're required.
So this is moving three months money you're receiving, federal money?
Yeah.
Okay, and the three, why you have three programs? What are the three programs?
She just said ARPA, uh, MDOT, all federally funded programs, yes.
Okay. I got it now.
Thirty.
You did a good job for the change, normally. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. That really means a lot.
All right, come by ya. All right, George. Any other items? I think you were close to the end, but I'm not sure.
Good there. I was gonna ask. I get this on the phone, this, uh, Barracuda email. Does that cost us money? Why we even have that? All I do is delete it when it comes on the phone.
You- well, I can- I can answer that question. It's- 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 it's security software to protect your network, and you have the option when you see that of setting up an account with your username, whatever you want it to be, and a password that only you would know, and then you could manage your email. I look and see what's in there and delete it because there's nothing I care about reading in there. But you could manage your email in that manner for security purposes.
So what does this cost us to do this? Is it costs us a lot of money, or just part of the program?
Roughly $27,000 on this for some upgrades that I am told are going to actually help Barracuda eat less of our email.
Yeah.
And let- allow through more that is not malware.
You might wanna pull the mic a little closer, Rachel.
I'm told that these will actually make the Barracuda program a little smarter, and it will eat less of our emails. Um, right now, it protects us from malware. It protects us from viruses. This is what stops all of us from infecting the system, because we have so many people in our network. Any one of us is a liability for infecting our network. That's why we're- we're doing this.
It's just-
Yeah, it is.
It's net- digital network security, George. Personally, it's money well spent. I'm glad to see it, so.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Rachel, again. So glad you didn't go home. On, uh, BB. I don't know, uh, Peter, you wanted to leave it. Pofa, you over there, Pofa?
I'm listening.
Okay. What is the- the Homeland Security Grant Program? What are- what we getting here? I was hoping we get the bridge from the Homeland Security.
No, no.
$250 million, no bridge?
No, that's a- that's a all, uh, uh, Bomb Squad mostly. Bomb Squad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Equipment and overtime and stuff like that.
And this, uh, this last one on, uh, the two- the last two, DD, you need D. I guess that you, Rachel? What is it we doing with the DD?
Undercore.
That was a bid, some kind of?
I'll start with DD. I messed up.
Huh?
Back in '22, I attached four exhibits. There were supposed to be five. I'm getting that fifth exhibit into the record.
All right, but nothing else changed, other than you listened. You listened to fifth one.
The, everything is set in stone. This is a clerical error fix.
And what is this, that we just got on the public information?
That I don't know about.
That's you, Jerry? What does that got to do with you?
Well, because this has to, this has to do with flood, storm. What it is, is that as part of our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to create a committee made up of local stakeholders, it's employees from our department and employees from police department that work together to provide this information so that the public can access it. But what this does, this generates this complies with some of the activities that we have to turn in every year to get points for it so that we could continue to get the discounts for the people on their flood insurance premiums.
So what is the cost to the city?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
What's all of it you're doing?
It's just the activities that we take on to do something to get our flood insurance rates down, and this is one of the required activities. And what's happening now is that they're waiting on us to pass this so that they can then evaluate us and give us our new rating. And, you know, if we can get enough points, we might even get a rating improvement. We'll see.
All right, thank you. Y'all glad I'm back?
I'm overjoyed. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Okey doke, Mr. Gines, anything? Mr. McGilvery, anything?
I just have one on Z. Mayor, I've looked at this upside down and backwards and everything, unless I just missed it. Isn't this the cart before the horse? Do we have any idea what the staircase is, might cost? Down there at the point?
We don't have a cost yet. We've got to get through design, but it is, the mayor's asked for something, just kind of basic, just to give people access. It's going to be a metal fabricated, just steps.
To attach our parking lot to our side of the bridge, so in essence, shorten the walk that you have to go all the way down to Myrtle Street. It just, it'll be a, an exit off of the walkway to our parking lot.
Any estimate, fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, three?
I would guess more like two hundred and less towards the fifty end because it all, I don't know how, it depends on where, how it lays out, how tall it is.
And the money may, you know, may be coming from a couple of different sources, Thailand's as well as MDOT.
Yeah.
Well, that was my next question.
But I don't want, but we'll chase that.
Yeah.
Would that come out of general fund, though, if we didn't get any of those one or two items that you mentioned?
We don't have to fund it directly right now, just.
We don't?
Yeah, this, yeah, just the design is being paid out, paid for outside of the engineering budget because it's just, it's not very much to design it. And then once we get it designed and we know how much money we're really looking at, then that's when the mayor will go looking for the money.
I'm new, just, this is norm, how it's done? We do the engineering studies and then?
Yes.
And then come up with the plan of what we're going to do?
Well, we have to design the project so till, before we, before we can determine how much money it is to even go after design. I mean, sometimes we do get the money ahead of time. We can get ballpark estimates. But we don't know an actual cost until the design is done.
Okay.
Would any of, any of the funding for that, whatever, let's say it's a quarter of a million dollars. How much of that would come out of the general fund?
I hope nothing. I mean, basically, MDOT as well as port or some of these other things could, you know, could be tied up. I mean,
Okay.
We're going to go chase the funding, just like we would do in any other MDOT kind of project.
And it'll come back to us before we do anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Correct? Yeah, glad I'm back? Okay.
Of course.
All right.
That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Mr. Glavin, anything?
I don't, don't have anything to add to this.
Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Grass? Okay. Item, Christie, item J, it mentions Speco security cameras. I don't know if that's top secret. Should we announce to the public? I'm just wondering what they are.
I honestly don't know. We got with PD and had them come spec us out cameras because they have a certain camera they like to use. They're actually going to come install them for us, too, to save us some money.
So is it, it's security then?
It's security cameras, yes.
Okay, it's going to tie into your network.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And item Q, Christie, this is, this is on the bottom to top bottom to top construction, Bellevue Lift Station. I was just looking for the date, when they're going to start. I know it's so many, well, how many days after the notice to proceed are they looking for completion of that project? I didn't see anything in. I was just curious.
I can go pull, I'm not sure, but it won't, the lift station's structure is already there. Basically, what they're doing is just putting pumps, rails, and the electrical panels up, so it won't be very disruptive, but let me go grab.
You don't, you don't need to. You could text it to me or email it to me.
The longest delay is going to be the control panels. It might, those might be as much as a year out.
Right, they're, it's tough to get them sometimes. Okay.
They'll back order from all the ARPA chain.
Just, you can email it to me. I was just curious. I don't suspect it'll be long. And let's see what the last item is. Okay, I'm good with that. All right, I'll entertain, let's see, we got the motion. We'll call for the question on the consent agenda. And then we'll, once we vote, we'll come back and gather the exceptions.
What do you want?
All in, we're voting on the consent agenda, and then we're going to come back and note the exceptions, and we'll include tabling item B for an executive session and then any other.
I'm going to make sure we got that done.
All right, all in favor of the consent agenda is presented with the exception of item B. It's approved on a six oh vote. And then, let's see, we'll need a motion to table item B.
Subject to call.
To, well, we want to make it November nineteenth, Peter, that gives you enough time. Table it to November nineteenth for an executive session. That would be Mr. Lawrence's motion is there a second? All right, so there's a second by Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling item B. It's approved on a six oh vote. Thank you. All right, now we'll move to exceptions. Mr. Lawrence, voting in opposition to any of these items?
None.
None, okay. Mr. Gines in opposition to any? Mr. McGilvery?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Glavin, any? Mr. Shoemaker? And I have none. Look at that, clean sweep, Mr. Mayor.
Good job.
Telling you, all that schmooze and pays off. That brings us to code enforcement, my favorite part of the meetings. And we'll start with, let's see, we'll open a public hearing on item A, Biloxi Investments, two fifty-one Strangie Avenue. Mr. Creel?
Property still in violation.
It's in violation. There are images up there on the big board. Is there anybody here to speak on the matter of two fifty-one Strangie Avenue? There being none, that hearing is closed.
Item B, Teresa R. and Nathan James Fitzgerald, sixteen eighty-four Vine Street, that case has been resolved.
All right.
Item C, HL and C Harrison LLC, five oh two Esters Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item D, Brenda Joyce Hudson Estate, two fifty-two Brown Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, John H. and Julia L. Love, two thirty Brown Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Gregory Pittman, two oh two Main Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, Gregory Pittman, six hundred Main Street, that case has been resolved. Item H, Ashley Ann Taylor, one four two seven seven Jim Bird Road, this property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone present to speak on the matter of one four two seven seven Jim Bird Road? Or is Ashley Ann Taylor or her representative present to speak on this matter? Okay, there being no one, that hearing is closed.
Item I, Dawn Langson, three fifty-two Hiller Drive, that case has been resolved. Item J, Dawn Langson, three fifty-six Hiller Drive, that case has been resolved. Item K, WC four, two oh one Fifth Street, this property's still in violation.
Oh, that went, that went, oh, thank you.
Concrete, daddy.
Fifth street, okay. Is any, is Mr. WC four present or his representative, or is there anyone to speak on the matter of two oh one Fifth Street? There being none, this matter is closed.
Okay, item L, Chow Wan Ngo, two seventy-one Keller Avenue, this case is still in violation.
Is Chow Wan Ngo present or his or her agent present to speak to this matter, or is anyone else present to speak to the matter of two seventy-one Keller Avenue? That hearing is closed. That brings us to the routine agenda. Wait for it, wait for it. We need a motion in a second.
I move.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines, and here we go. Welcome back, Mr. Lawrence.
All right, we checking on the money? Walt has somewhere to go. He said he has the money coming in for next week. So he, that's the report he just said to pass on to y'all, so that's the update from him. The nickels are in the mail.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other questions about the routine agenda? All right, call for the question. All in favor of approving the routine agenda is presented. Passes on a six oh vote. That moves us to adjournment. Is there a motion?
The move.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. McGilvery. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November nineteenth at one thirty. All in favor of adjourning? It's approved on a six oh vote.
Who's that one you got? Let's stick it up in the air.